Whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
Starting to forget.
Jerry, you want to, you want to start it or not? You want me to start?
Go ahead and start the roll call.
Thank you so much.
Meeting.
So, roll call for the, the March third meeting of the Ulster County Planning Board. So, Denny is vacant. So, the sopas Roxanne Pecora.
Here.
Thank you. Gardner Glenn Gaddally.
Here.
Thank you. Hardenburg is vacant. Hurley, Michael Cohen.
Mitchell here.
I'm sorry, I apologize. My eyes aren't that good and I'm sitting in a half dark room. I apologize for that, Mitchell. Kingston, Mr. Conyer.
Here.
Lloyd, Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Marble Town, Mr. Proctor is, has excused and Mr. Hanson has not gone through the full appointment. So, the position is effectively vacant, vacant. Marlboro, Ms. Landzata.
Here.
New Poles, Amanda Gatto.
Here.
Okay. Olive, Mr. Bajus.
I'm here.
Thank you. By the kill, Mr. Wilkin.
Here.
Rochester, Mr. Baden.
Here.
Rosedale, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Sawgrass, Ms. Hovardi.
Here.
Thank you. Shandaken, Ms. Welton.
Here.
Shangam, Mr. Watkins.
Here.
Ulster, Mr. Amquist.
Here.
Worsing, Mr. Markowitz.
They couldn't do it.
He's online.
Yeah, he's.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Markowitz. We thought we saw you. Woodstock.
Yeah.
Mr. Rudikoff. Ellenville, Mr. Travers.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Travers. New Poles, Mr. Murray.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Sawgrass, Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Kingston, Mr. Von Avita Goldman, he has resigned. Kingston, Gio Gagliardi, Gio?
Here.
Thank you. So, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, we want to welcome the three new members we have. Uh, Mr. Travers, Mr. Gaddally and Mr. Cohen. Um, I'd like you to each tell us a little bit about yourselves. You're first.
Hi, this is Richard Travers. I'll be glad to go first. I'm, um, I'm an individual who's lived in the Rondell Valley as a weekender since nineteen eighty and as a full-time person since twenty twenty. I'm a member of the Roundup Valley Business Association, the ex-president of the Roundup Valley Business Association. I currently live in Ellenville. I purchased the, the old village hall, which is now an inn called Eighty-One North. And I'm pleased to be part of this group and look forward to, um, adding to the excellence of what's being done.
Thank you. Mr. Goodell.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I've lived in the Hudson Valley since nineteen seventy-three and in Gardner since eighty-eight. Um, in terms of background, my wife and I ran a grant writing firm for twenty years based in Ulster County. And for the last fifteen years, I worked for a mid-sized civil engineering firm. Um, and I'm a certified planner. I retired in, um, October and then the town of Gardner wanted me to work very part-time as their planning and zoning clerk. So, I'm just close to being retired. But anyway, I'm enjoying that work very much in Gardner and, um, I appreciate being, uh, being able to serve on the county planning board.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm a little different than everybody on the board. I'm retired US Army after thirty-two years. And, um, I've not been in one place since nineteen seventy-eight for more than five years. And so, I finally landed here in West Hurley, New York, and I decided to donate my time because I've never had the time to donate before. So, I am here to, um, help out how I can. I'm currently the chairman of the Planning Board in Hurley. And, um, I just, um, finished a year with the, as chairman of the Comprehensive Review Committee in Hurley as well. Um, so, and Lisa Mance, uh, I don't know if she's on, she was, but she's been the primary and I'll be the primary and hello, everybody.
Welcome.
Hello.
Also want to thank Lisa and Joanna for their service, um, over the last few years. So, thank you. All right. Uh, everyone got a copy of the minutes? Last month's minutes?
Yeah, motion to approve, Mike Baden.
Second. Second at Conyer. Hey, I gotta start off, okay?
I guess so. I guess so. You're right in sync.
So, if I could remind the board members for motions and seconds, uh, to please state your names so that we have them for the record. Thank you. So, Jerry, you have a motion and second on the floor?
Okay. All those opposed? Any recitals? Abstentions?
You need, you need to think about abstentions. I've got new members. I'm not sure whether they want to vote on the minutes or not. I can tell you that you can if you've read them.
Seeing none. The minutes are passed.
Dennis, if I can interrupt for a minute, Rob, I don't know if you saw that chat message that apparently the other people can't hear the audio?
Yeah, not sure why.
I mean, we can all, that's.
Yeah.
Nobody in, nobody in the attendees can hear the audio. Huh. I've never experienced that before. I don't, we can all hear it, so I don't understand why they wouldn't be able to.
Yeah.
You can let them all in, can you, Rob?
Huh. Yeah, I mean, I could, I don't know if that would make a difference.
Well, we can try it.
Yeah, let me see what happens. There. Don't usually want to do this. Uh.
We'll have to trust them.
Yeah. I don't know why that's.
You're saying the chat is disabled as well. I'm seeing that as well.
Dennis, this is Kevin Smith that just came on. Whatever Rob just did changed. Now we can.
Right.
I can, we can hear you now and, and obviously you can hear us as well, so.
Thank you. So, we'll see if we can correct that in the future, but we haven't had that problem in the past. So, Jerry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you had a motion and second and, and the minutes were passed, right?
Yes, they were.
Thank you.
Um, education and training opportunities. Everyone has a chance to, uh, read the, uh, agenda. Uh, there's one planned for the Agon Markets. It's going to be, uh, March twenty-third, six-thirty.
And I want to thank Sidney Landzata, uh, board member Landzata basically asked us if we would reach out to, to Agon Markets. We've done, we've done that. So, we have this set up. Uh, this is a conversation about, um, Agon Markets, uh, laws that relates to local zoning and, uh, also some of the issues associated with Agon Markets law and some of the grant opportunities that are out there as well. A gentleman by the name of Jeff Keigho will be representing, should be about, I would say, about an hour, hour and a half instead of the normal two hours. Um, so that's out there. Um, I have a couple of other announcements, just so you know. Uh, New York Planning Federation, um, by being members of the County Planning Board, you're also a member of, of the New York Planning Federation because we subscribe to that. So, on, uh, March twenty-fourth, uh, from twelve to one, they're going to do, uh, one on, uh, communications and the media. On April fifteenth, they're going to do one again from twelve to one on site plan review, and that's going to be with the La Berge Group. On April twenty-second, from twelve to one, they're going to do, uh, site plan review, uh, mishaps. And on May fifth, um, from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, they're going to discuss the open meetings law. And on May, uh, sometime in May, to be announced, they're going to be doing something on ethics for planning and zoning board members. If anybody wants that list, we can get it to you. It should be, I think it should be in your agenda packet. If it wasn't, we can certainly make sure you get it.
I don't think it was in the agenda packet. Today, I know they held one for, um, comprehensive plan.
Yep.
Well.
Dennis, this is Mitchell Cohen. If you can send that, I'd appreciate it. I did, I did not receive that.
Sure, Mitch. Not Mitch. I'm sorry. I'll be happy to.
Thanks.
If it wasn't in the agenda packet, maybe to send it to everyone?
I will. We'll send it again. So, as a reminder.
Thank you.
Community reports.
Uh, Jerry, this is not specific to, uh, my community, but to all our communities. Just want to take a moment to wish Mary Ann, uh, our planning department secretary, a very happy birthday today. I know she'll be hearing these minutes when she's transcribing them. So, happy birthday, Mary Ann.
Happy birthday.
We missed it. We missed her. We missed, we, we, we all wished her a happy birthday today, uh, for those of us that were in the office. So, she's, she said she was going to go home tonight and relax and take it easy, but she may have a couple of beers on Saturday. That's what you.
Second.
And, and just for the other, for, for the board members, you, you, you really don't have any, um, any sense in terms of how important Mary Ann is to the, uh, to the office. I mean, from, um, making sure that all of these notices gets out in terms of the amount, once the county planning department started to take over special projects, um, the amount of work on Mary Ann in terms of paying those bills i- is substantial. And, uh, let me give you an example. We're in the process right now of, of signing a contract and making an award for the, the construction of the Midtown Linear Park. So, Mary Ann and I today went over, uh, all of the NISE dot items that have to go into that contract that have to be entered into our payment system. And there's over several hundred items that have to be entered. Each of them has a, a cost per, a unit cost and a bid, a bid price. Um, and they all have to be entered. At the end of the day, they all have to add up to the right amount. Um, so it, it's a, it's a yeoman's amount of work. Uh, and then when you pay, you have to pay on those items and you have to draw down on those items as well. So, when we start making payments and the contractors were about one point four million. So, when we start making payments on them, the amount of checking back and forth that has to go on, both from my side or it used to be Chris's side, but both from our side at, at, at the, at the administrative level and then back into the actual entering of all this material, there's just an enormous amount of work. And, and she's really carrying, you know, not just, not just us and the special projects, she's also carrying four other individuals in the office in terms of their work, whether it be notices on, on, uh, illegal notices, whether or the transportation council's, uh, areas that they have to work in, uh, and the contracts for them. So, I mean, last year, we were in, we were in the neighborhood of, of well over, uh, three to five million dollars worth of outside consultant contracts and construction contracts. And she's trying to keep track of, as well as all the resolutions that, I mean, in some instances, there's a, there's ten, ten resolutions for each individual, uh, process that we have to go through. Um, so the idea that, that we call Mary Ann administrative assistant, but Mary Ann literally is what keeps the planning department alive. And we, we, we really need to, I, I can't say that enough. Happy birthday, Mary.
You're well.
Dennis is there to pledge to mitigate her workload?
Yeah. I wish there was, but there isn't. You know, the, the, the key is, is we, you know, we end up, I mean, to give you an example, we end up up taking on workload that is, in some instances, the responsibility of other departments. But because of the other department, because of expertise within our department, we end up doing that work. Um, so we're, we're, even though we're not actually processing some of the claims, we also have to validate those claims that go to the other departments. Whether it be a public safety radio tower in, 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 uh, in Sawgrass, which we're working on, or the fire training center, which many of the board members have heard about, Ushokan Rail Trail or now the Kingston Linear Park and, and soon to be the, I'm sorry, the Midtown Linear Park and soon to be the Kingston Rail Trail. Um, whether, or either other numerous other kinds of, of work that we're doing with other departments, including some of the Tech City work. Um, all of that falls back on Mary Ann's shoulders to make sure that we don't make a mistake in terms of what resolutions are out there. Uh, and what, um, what cross-checks that we have to do with other, other departments. And, and it's, it's constant and, and it certainly hasn't let up. It's actually increased.
Like I said before, make sure you treat her well.
Absolutely. But thank you for that, Michael. And, and I, I guess we can go back to community reports.
Well. Jerry, this is Drew from Town of Olive. Um, I've got several things from the community report.
Okay.
Last month, uh, the town board adopted a natural resource inventory shortened for NRI. Um, so a hundred and thirty-eight page document with twenty-one maps dealing with water and soils, et cetera. Um, a lot of, a lot of thanks goes to our Conservation Advisory Council and DEC who put that together for us at no cost to the town. But if any of you are interested in seeing what we did, it should be on our website along with the maps. Uh, the other thing is, um, next week, uh, the town board's going to vote to start the process of CCA, which is the Community Choice Aggregation. To, uh, I think it's about a year-long process to actually get it going. Um, we also went out for RFPs on two, I'll call it, uh, large culvert crossings, one on Red Maple and another one on Boss Stock. Both of those are important because they get somewhere around, if you get a ten-year, uh, flood type event, they can over top over, so. Uh, so those, those RFPs are for the design of the culvert and then we'll have to go out and hit bids for actual getting the, the work done.
Drew, you have money for those?
Well, we're getting, so we've been very lucky by getting money from the Ashokan, um, screen management group.
Okay.
We've, we've done several crossings now and that's where the design money comes from. And then we wind up getting the, the support either from them or DEP for, uh, doing the crossings.
You know, because the, 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 this New York State Bridge and Culvert Program is out, so you can apply through that as well, just so you know.
Okay, thanks. Um, also, as I mentioned last month or maybe in, even in January, uh, the work has started in Boysville to demolish uh, some of the buildings. So, the, the, the building that was, had a, had a small little side building in the, uh, log cabin had, the last time I was down there, which was last week, it had been both reduced to rubble. The other three main buildings had not been started yet as far as I could tell. And the other, another thing we're working on is the town is, um, hopefully by April or May, we will have a new improved, more, more modern website. Our website right now is kind of archaic. Hard to use, hard to find things. So, we're working on getting that updated also. That's it.
That's quite a bit.
Yeah.
Thanks, Drew.
Can, can I ask you a question? I don't know if this is the right time for it, but I mean, uh, in New Poles here, we just recently became aware of this potential reservoir project, this energy project?
Yeah, I, I hate to even bring that up, but, um, it was sprung on, on pretty much everybody in the county. We, we as a town, we're not notified specifically. We heard about it from Jim Quigley out of Town of Ulster. DEP was not informed of it either, even though most of that structure was proposed to be on their property. Um, I guess there's two ways of looking at it. I look at it as, it's such a ridiculous thing that it's, it's probably never going to happen. At the same time, we as the town can't ignore it. So, our supervisors put in a, um, I'm not quite sure what it is, what, what it would call it.
It's a request for intervenor status, Drew.
Right.
And we, we sent him the, we, we sort of sent him the how-to. I, I sent out to the supervisors in the affected communities.
Okay.
Sort of the how-to for intervenor status and also what you can do as an individual. So, you can sign up as an individual. You can do what they call, uh, e-cometor. And, and you can, you can monitor the, uh, the commission's efforts with respect to the project if you don't want to achieve full intervenor status.
Right. So, our, our supervisor did do that. Um, and I'm sure we're going to have other comments to make in the comment period. Um, but the, the, as far as I can see, the, the, the company out in California that's proposing this has never stepped foot in this county. I'm sure they did everything, looking at Google Maps or something like that and coming up with ideas. Um, so it'll be another thing to keep our eye on.
But there is a way that individuals can comment during the two-month comment period, which is sometimes, sometime in early April, I think.
Yeah, and, and if the board wants that, I mean, I can just, uh, forward the email that we sent to the supervisors that were involved as well as county legislators. Um, to let, to let you know how you can as an individual, if you would like to, you can, you can actually intervene as an individual if you so choose. But you can also comment in, in what they call e-subscribe, so that you get all the commission's filings, all the filings with the commission.
Yeah, that would be great if you could send that out.
Yeah, not a problem.
Yeah.
But.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Town of Shandaken, um, the, uh, coffee shop proposal, the applicant withdrew the request. Uh, it looked like, uh, it was going to be shot down by the zoning board. So, she sent a letter, uh, in advance of the zoning board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank, and thank you for all, all your input. It was very helpful.
Town of Shangam, um, McGruder Solar is back. Um, they had a twenty-four meg system going in and they've lowered it down to a five meg system. And they were at the meeting for the first time last night with that. And they're planning on moving forward, um, with an application for battery storage also.
Where, where's that located? Mr. Watkins?
On Garrison Farm, which is near the Orange County border.
Okay, I remember now. Thank you.
Uh, what's that? Three hundred there? Three hundred and Plains Road?
About a half mile north of three hundred. Between Plains and Orchard Drive.
Yeah, I know where it is. Yeah, thank you.
I, I have a question about that hydroelectric, uh, plant proposal. Uh, is, is it true that, um, if the, um, power agency, uh, determines that there's an urgent need for the power that would be generated, that they could bypass the DEC or the local, uh, towns?
Well, they certainly can bypass the local towns. The, there is a question relative to whether they can bypass, uh, DEC because in some instances, there's a four oh one, what they call a four oh one water quality permit, and that's a federal permit, and that has been delegated to DEC. So, whether or not they would be able to, um, bypass the DEC based on that permit, I, I'm not sure. Um, that's a, that's a higher order level with the legal folks having that discussion. Um, but, um, they certainly have, they can be granted the right for eminent domain through, as the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Uh, and they certainly have the ability to essentially to ignore local zoning or land use restrictions.
But would this be on the basis of need by, uh, surrounding, um, towns or by New York City? Uh, and I, I would think that the solar farms being built would make that less likely. Uh, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I, I really don't want to spend a lot of time. I can take this offline if you'd like and, and, and have that discussion offline, Vivian.
Okay.
But actually renewable energy actually makes it more likely.
Oh, more likely?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other?
It's supposed to be like a peak, peaker plant, right? It's supposed to fill the need when the grid, it's not in all the time. It's supposed to be a.
Think, think of it, let me just, there's something called, if you want to Google something, Google something called the duck curve. And it, it, the duck curves gives you a sense of how energy is used throughout the day. Uh, and if you look at the duck curve and then think about when, when solar generates most of its power, the duck curve eventually says we have moderate, moderate to high energy use in the morning. It drops off in the afternoon. And then we have moderate to really high energy use, beginning with, when people start to come home and, and start to do all the things like cook supper, turn their air conditioning on, wash the dishes, wash land, laundry, et cetera, et cetera. And if you think about that compared to when solar produces most of its power, most of the power solar is produced in the afternoon. And so, it's, it's in the, it's on the other side of the duck curve. Um, the, the good news is, is that, and you just heard Mr. Watkins say it, most of the solar facilities that we're seeing being constructed now are actually being constructed with battery storage because the solar operators actually understand that they're on the wrong side of that duck curve and they're basically using, using their power when they're producing it and storing it and batteries and releasing it. So, distributed energy storage or distributed battery storage may lessen that need, but this is a fairly large planet. It's eight hundred megawatts, which is, which is a large, was a very large plant.
Any other community reports?
Well, just following up on what Drew mentioned in Gardner, the town board approved and adopted a natural resources inventory about a week ago. And, uh, planning board, uh, in fact, I was working on it today. All of our checklists have been revised to have applicants, uh, where it's applicable, um, you know, to direct them to the NRI and, um, use, use it directly in our, um, planning process.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Jerry, one, um, one more for Rochester. Um, we were, uh, awarded a, uh, grant for, uh, from the, uh, I'm trying to remember the name of the organization, Lifeboat LV, Lifeboat HV is the name of the organization. It's a subsidiary of, uh, the New World Fund program, uh, organization, and, uh, they awarded six grants, uh, two in Ulster County, two in Duchess and two in Columbia. And the purpose of the grant is, uh, to create a local task force that will work toward achieving higher level status of the Climate Smart Communities Program. So, th- they'll be assisting us through the process of, to, uh, become, we took the pledge in December. We're now working through the process to, uh, become either, uh, bronze or a si- silver. I don't think we're going to try to even shoot for gold at this point, but, um, we were the recipients of a small grant that will pay for the time for our, uh, person who's going to coordinate that. And I think that, not the Town of Ulster, but a private citizen organization in Ulster, in, located in the Town of Ulster was the other, uh, the other recipient. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Town of Hurley, excuse me. Town of Hurley was the other recipient.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'll move on to planning reports. Uh, the board reports, uh, I have nothing. There are no committee reports. So, Dennis, would you like to provide the planning reports, please?
Sure. And, and planning, the financial report right now, we're, we're in the beginning of our budget. So, um, the good news is, is we haven't been asked to cut it yet. Um, so, uh, uh, which, which happened last year, by the way. Um, so that's the good news. We're, so we're in good financial shape. I just want to remind the board members that the board doesn't have any fiscal responsibility with respect to the planning department's financial reports. We just provide them to you, uh, for transparency purposes. Um, and then from an environmental notice bulletins, I, I don't have any comments on the environmental notices, bulletins that were out there. Uh, I do have two communications that were, weren't in your pa- in your, in your packet that came in late. One has to do with the Farmbridge proposal, which is located at Enterprise West, which is the former Bank of America building. It's on, on the other side of, uh, uh, on Enterprise Drive. Uh, and that's a site plan review, uh, process, uh, to essentially move the Farmbridge facility uh, from the east side of, of that, uh, into, uh, a county-owned facility. It is county-owned now, uh, on the west side of Enterprise Drive. And we've been working with them, uh, on that. They have to go through site plan review at the town level because they're proposing to add some loading docks onto the building. Uh, and some internal reviews. And we also have, um, a lead agency request from the town of, the town board for something called Industrial Arts Brewing. Uh, and that's located at the bottom of Forest Hill Drive and Route twenty-eight. If anybody remembers those, um, structures that are located at, at the bottom of those structures, I forget what they're called now. Uh, they look like.
Domes.
Thank you. Geodysic zones. Uh, thank you, Robert.
They're both on our agenda tonight.
And they're also on our agenda tonight, but those are two communications that are not in your agenda packet. I have nothing on, on the environmental notice boards. If anybody has any questions, we can go over them, but otherwise I have nothing. I have nothing on the environmental notice bulletin. If anybody has any questions, we can go over them. Otherwise, I have nothing.
Um, Dennis, can I just ask you a question about them? So so the one that's for the the wastewater treatment plant coming out of Gardner, where they want to change the different levels in monitoring going into the Walkill. So what's, I'm, I'm sorry that I don't know how this works, but so is that? So you're, so that's the first time I'd seen it was here. So I wasn't aware that it was going on.
They end up being published in something called the New York State Environmental Notice Bulletin, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Environmental Notice Bulletin. And these are what they call speedy's permits, which is state pollution elimination discharge systems permits. And they typically, they typically are reviewed, I'd like to say, depending on their major or minor, it's generally every five years. And so those, when they come up review, there's a notice of them, you could comment on them. Generally, the department knows what it's going to do. And usually those changes that are being made now relate to biological oxygen demand. And usually they're starting to, they have started a long time ago, but they're really stepping up their their regulation with respect to phosphorus.
Okay, because what I didn't see the change for phosphorus, but I saw that they wanted to eliminate monitoring for nitrogen and settle solids, and they wanted to raise the limit or change the, I think it was raise something to the affluent limits. And stop marching for pH. We know the Walkill is impaired for nitrogen and phosphorus. So I was just wondering what's behind that and.
Yeah, I mean, you're certainly welcome. We you're certainly welcome to call DEC relative to those. But these are usually more like ministerial type of actions, and we just provide them for notice to the board.
Okay, thanks.
Amanda, you can also, on the DEC website, you can sign up for notifications and you'll get the weekly E N B in your email box. And then you can look at Region Three, which is what we are, and see all the notices for the week in there.
The environmental notifications for that relate to Shandaken, there's two of them. Do they require any action on our part?
Unless you do, not unless you have some concerns over them. I didn't see anything that would 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 generate any concern. But if the town has some concerns, they certainly could comment.
Right, so we're not required to know?
No.
Good job.
Anything else, Dennis?
No, I think the only thing we covered on, I was going to talk about a little bit, was the Midtown Linear Park, what I covered in in prior discussion relative to Mary Ann's birthday. So I don't think I need to do that. But we are, we are extremely busy right now. I can tell you that. I'll just leave it. I'll just leave it at that because I know we have people here tonight to talk about the the rail trail report that was done by the rail, I'm sorry, the trail report that was done by the Trails Advisory Committee, and I want to give them enough time.
I was just going to the under special topics. So I'd like to open the mic to the Trails Advisory Committee to tell us what's going on.
Can I share presentation, Rob?
I just gave Carl access maiden co-host, so you can go here and share a screen now.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kevin Smith. I'm currently, I'm an appointed member of the Trails Advisory Committee. And I am in 2020 and 2021, I am the Chair of the Trails Advisory Committee to the Legislature. I'm also Chair of the Woodstock Land Conservancy Board. And we've been very involved working in partnership with the County and New York City D E P on the Ashokan Rail Trail Project. In the years of planning up to the construction and opening of the trail and since its opening, involved with the stewards program, which is a partnership project with Ulster County and New York, New Jersey Trail Conference and New York City D E P as well. We, last year, we were looking at all of the trail projects that were coming to fruition and seeing a remarkable kind of transformation of what had been some disparate unconnected trails and some trails of substantial length that were also not connected to other trails. And started to see the longstanding vision of Ulster County as memorialized in things like the Open Space Plan and the Non-Motorized Transportation Plan starting to come to fruition. And with my partner in crime here, Carl Beard, recently retired from the National Park Service, who's been on a loan of technical assistance to the Trails Advisory Committee and to Ulster County on trails projects for going back to eight or nine years now, and has also been advising several of the area land trusts on their rail trail projects. We thought there was a real opportunity here to mark the accomplishments that have occurred over the years. And kind of really say, show where the county has come to and what it's made possible. And what we're looking at in the near and midterm in terms of a truly connected trail network that is also now that part of it is makes up the core of the Empire State Trail, the 750 mile statewide trail that comes over the walkway over the Hudson and and our rail trail network is a large portion of the 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 part of the Empire State Trail that passes through Ulster County. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Carl to show you some highlights from our Trails Report. And Carl, take it away.
Great, thank you. So, Robert, am I sharing now? If I.
Should be a button on your screen to hit share.
Yeah, I hit share screen. Oh, okay. And that this time it popped up. Okay.
Yeah, then you got to tell it what you're sharing.
Then I'm sharing. Okay.
Now you got it. Now you're set.
We're in. Okay, so thanks, Kevin, for that introduction. So for the last year, we've been working on this report. It was supposed to be completed in March of 2020, but things changed that at that time. And so we've actually had to sort of scurry around and change everything that we that we thought we knew about the trails. But Kevin is exactly right. We've had an incredible couple of years for trails. So we created this 34 page report. This is just a thumbnail of some of that. It's produced by the County Trails Advisory Committee with assistance from my previous employer, the National Park Service Rivers and Trails Program. That's what the cover is. That's the Ashokan Rail Trail, in case you haven't been there.
And and I would I would just interject that we also received assistance from the from the County Planning Department, from Chris White and the Transportation Council in terms of some of the background data and mapage.
Oh, yes. So why this? Why now? In from the end of 2019 to the end of 2020, Ulster County added some 20 plus miles of trail. And we argue it is being transformed. What do we mean by transformed? We mean that it's changed the way that people live in our communities, the things that they do day in and day out, the way they move around. And it's changed the the character of our communities. Couple of highlights, the Ashokan Rail Trail, 11 and a half miles long, opening that part of our county to the general public for the first time in 100 years. Transformative. The Hudson Valley Rail Trail, which goes from Highland to New Paltz for the first time, connects those two communities and walkway over the Hudson. And it's also part of the bottom line, the Empire State Trail. The River to Ridge Trail by Open Space Institute and Mohawk Preserve, connecting the Village of New Paltz to the Shangam Mountains to the Mohawk Preserve Carriage Road System. Again, you can go to Mohawk without getting in your car from New Paltz or from the other connecting rail trail. Kingston Point Rail Trails, Ulster County's first urban rail trail. Goes 1.5 miles from the midtown area, right behind the hospital, just about down to the Rondout Hudson Confluence. Real urban opportunity. And also the Empire State Trail was, you know, completed this year, connecting us to a 750 mile trail system statewide. So here's kind of the backstory, the the opportunity that Ulster County has inherited from our history here. Four major transportation corridors, well, not that major. I mean, we're kind of a small county. But but four transportation corridors that have been repurposed or being repurposed for a more sustainable, more current transportation purpose, and that is trails, rail trails. The green stuff on this map is what's completed now. What we've got is the corridors are the Ulster and Delaware Corridor along the Route 28. The Ontario and Western are ONW Corridor that goes down Route 209 Corridor. The Walkill Valley Line that goes through New Paltz, south into Orange County. And then the Maybrook Line that came over walkway over the Hudson, actually dove south into Orange County, but is now connected by the 299 Corridor. And then the new kid in town is the Empire State Trail, which is this little dotted line that threads through. And actually, this what's shown in yellow here is now green. It's completed the Empire State Trail in that area. So this is what we've got in terms of underlying resources. Again, the green stuff is what's done. Red for the future. Of course, some of Ulster County is jaw droppingly beautiful. We have real destination quality things. Ordinarily, one would show Walkway Over the Hudson, but we've got our own thing like that. And this is not the only one. We've got the Walkill River Tressle. But there are also very functional sections of this that really just affect the way people move around close to home. You know, why do we care? Ulster County, the rail trails alone received over 600,000 visitors in 2019, and that number has gone up. That's a conservative number. If we were to recalibrate, I think that number would be closer to somewhere around 820,000 visits. Uses individual uses of the trail per year. So people have figured out this opportunity. Now with that, visitation comes an economic benefit. And Ulster County has derived more than $10 million from spending by rail trail users alone, and that's in 2019. That's again, a conservative number. How we get to that is using what we know of trail counts and then what we know of trail visitor data, what where are people coming from, or whether the local users, non-local users. Over here, you can see local users spend between $3 and $13 a day. That's you and me buying a soda, things like that, snacks. As we go out for a walk or a bicycle ride on a trail or birding or whatever. People from outside the county spend a little bit more on gas and things like that, maybe a lunch, a sandwich, 15 to 35 a day. And overnighters spend the cost of whatever overnight costs. So we have some information on the breakdown of these, and we can easily get to a number of 10 or more million dollars. The no brainer is that trails boost local businesses, obviously restaurants, snack shops, things like that, gas stations.
And. Oh, can I just jump in for one second to add that the fourth category, the fourth bullet point here, under the Trails Boost Local Economy would be multi-day, multi-night visitors. And those are the kinds of visitors that you get when you start having a connected trail network, especially one that's part of a long distance trail network. Then you start getting people that come for a week. And they spend commensurately more dollars for more reasons in the community.
Right, these are per day expenditures. So but yeah, you multiply out that that per day expenditure times the length of the visit. Whether you're extending a weekend visit for an extra day, whatever they're doing, or maybe staying for a week. So again, you know, trails boost local businesses, and there's an interesting model called the Trail Towns Model. It's taken from the the Great Allo Ganey Passage Trail, southwest Pennsylvania, Maryland into West Virginia, where they've really, there's there's a book and a program that we can learn from, how how local communities can help capture the benefits of these. And then the other thing is that actually even from the truck construction end, turns out trails create more jobs per million dollars spent than than do roads. So they're good economics all around. The other reason is health, public health. There's a fascinating study from Lincoln, Nebraska, done by the CDC, HHS, and the University of California, San Diego that really bore down on this and figured out that a dollar investment in trails for physical activities, these these kinds of trails yields about $2.94, almost three bucks in in direct medical benefit. Why? It's because if people who live closer to trails use them more, and they tend, they're more likely to meet the recommended levels of physical activity that every health organization in the nation recommends, you know, the 30 minutes, five times a week type thing. About, you know, half again, more is more likely than people who don't live near trails. And that translates into direct medical benefits, you know, reduced obesity, heart disease, diabetes. These are the three big ones that are, again, known, every major health organization talks about them. And the Ulster County Community Health Improvement Plan calls them out and actually calls for for us in Ulster County communities to, in their language, improve community environments that support active transportation and recreational physical activity for people of all ages and abilities. And our showcase here is this photo on the right. These are taken by Carriage Entry at Walkill Valley Land Trust. She's who's been capturing trail stories. This is a group of of young moms who call themselves Strong as a Mother, who have been getting out regularly, meeting and for social time, getting out on the on the rail trails. And because they're just easy things for them to do with their kids. Again, last March, everything changed, and we started to learn more than we ever thought we would. And one thing we learned is, like many parks and trails across the country, that our trails prove themselves as what we call essential public infrastructure. We saw enormous surges in trail usage as all the indoor opportunities closed nationally routinely. People observed 200% increases in uses to over 400%. We had just started our counting, so we don't have good, you know, change numbers, but we know that the numbers were huge. The the numbers were huge enough so that places like Mohawk Preserve exceeded their management capacity and had to close for a couple of months. New Jersey State Parks closed, and most of those people, following the law of traveling two hours north for their recreation, they came here and added to our burden. So we, why? It's because we actually have social and physical needs to to move around, get out outside of our houses, outside of our cars. So they're essential to, trails are essential to physical and mental health. And that's we've, those of us who plan these kinds of things have known this. This is part of our our mantra. Why, again, why? Why is that so important? Because these trails are accessible and they're close to home. They offer opportunities for safe outdoor recreation, even in COVID times, rail trails are wide enough so that people can social distance. As you can see, the the YMCA kids, you know, here on the on the right. And they offer us a way to move around in our communities without having to, you know, get on a bus or get in our car, things like that, just to get out for a little bit. One of the important parts of a report is is the trail stories. We, again, a number of our people, and especially Carriage Entry at Walkill Valley Land Trust, she's been out capturing images and interviewing people who are out on our trails, because trails are for people. That's that's what trails do. They they connect us to our communities. They connect us to our surroundings, and they connect us to each other as people. And she just really tapped into a lot of this understanding. Again, you know, trails become a regular part of life if you live here, and for visitors, they're a real attraction. You know, if we have, you know, here's a vet up here who happens to have Huntington's Disease, who's been out running in his tricycle there, running with his pal, you know, just about every day down in the town of Gardner, visiting people from New York City, a family near New Paltz. And a disability disability rights advocate out for a toot with her dog on the Ashokan Rail Trail. All kinds of people, all the time. So, you know, where are we at now? We have currently about 75 miles of these kind of shared use community trails. And there's a potential of about 120 miles all told. Again, looking back at the map, the green stuff is what's done. The standing opportunity is the is the stuff that shows here in in red. And again, you know, what these trails let us do is is to help us live in what we hope is a help us live in what we hope is a growing community, our growing communities, without being hemmed in by those, by that growth where we live. These are, since railroads went straight through most of our communities, you know, they're close to home. So what's next? We've identified some important next steps. One thing is to complete that network. That's the red sections in the map previous. About four or five gaps are about nine and a half miles, maybe 10 miles of gaps that would bring in about six new communities extending down to, I can go back there, extending down to the Orange County line down here, connecting Ellenville and fixing a problematic gap around Accord, possibly connecting Kingston to the end of the Ashokan Rail Trail, and then extending opportunities to the communities in the northwest part of the county.
Before Dennis says it, I'll point out that if you, if you look at the northeast portion of the county, you'll see that one of our largest towns, Sargertes, is not connected. And that's a real challenge. But that's, that's the kind of visioning that we should start doing now, in our opinion. Because it will be really important in the future if we can realize a connection. It may not be perfect, but if we can loop Sargertes and that kind of 9W Route 32 lower Asopus Corridor into this network to connect it in somehow.
The same is true of Marlborough down here and this whole access of the county, parallel to the Hudson River. Yeah, but those are, those are challenges that we're interested. We have another map that shows activity that is underway in those communities. But, or actually, at least in Marlborough, well, actually, both of them. But that's, you'll have to read the book to get that. You know, back to, you know, next steps, you know, complete that network. And then figure out ways to weave the trails more effectively into communities. But the obvious ways are things like what we call gateways. I don't mean physical gates, but how to create an easy transition from the community to the surrounding landscape, signage, things like that, linkages with things like complete streets, the transportation infrastructure sidewalks, and with local attractions and businesses. And importantly, to make the trails relevant to the entire community, including people who don't have cars or who don't have good access to transit. And that's kind of the social and economic equity issue of trails, making the benefits of the trails available to all of our residents. Another thing, you know, coordinate management and stewardship. We have this, this growing system. It's becoming, it's becoming a system. And it's, will be more important to coordinate between corridors at the county level so that we have coordinated management oversight, monitoring, things like that. And because these rail trails exist at that kind of funny interface. We don't have a parks department, we have DPW. But these rail trails are kind of at that interface of parks, DPW, transportation, tourism, all those things kind of come together on trails. And another thing is counting trail users. We have some numbers, but it's, the proverb is, you know, how can you manage what you cannot count? So we need better counts of who's here, why, what they're doing. You know, how these things are being used, where, and to help us get a grip on management. And the final thing is to capture the health and economic benefits, all of these benefits of the trails that they provide, and learning from other examples like the Trail Towns model that I mentioned before. So that's, in a nutshell, is our report. We're working with the county to get the report up on the county website so that more people can see it. We now have, thanks to my previous employer, 1,000 printed copies of this that we'll, we'll make available to you as best we can. And I think we have also a link to, we can share a link to the, an online version of this that y'all can read right away. So that's what I've got. Shall I stop my share now? Please feel free to ask questions.
I just, I just placed a link to the, a publicly shareable link to the report, the, you know, digital version of the report in the chat. And Carl, do you want to talk about the printed copies?
My car is stuffed with them. What else would you like to know? The, yeah, we can get a case to the county building. Dennis, I don't know if you'd want to help distribute those within your network? And we'll, we'll work with, again, the town supervisors, whoever needs, needs these to planning boards.
And let me make the offer that the Transportation Council, under its non-motorized section, be more than willing to put the state of the trails up and credit the advisory committee for that, if that's, if that's okay with you folks.
Thank you. We'd love it. That'd be great. Okay. And Carl, I'm probably putting Carl on the spot here, but we are available to give this presentation to other, other groups as well. So if, if any of the members of the board would like to engage us to come and give this presentation to another audience, please get in contact with us.
Thank you, Kevin and Carl, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
If I can, just, if I can, I'd just like to say, just like to say a few things in terms of, in terms of where we are. There is, it is really important to recognize the efforts of an advisory committee that essentially has done so much, not only to raise the awareness of trails on a county-wide basis and with decision-makers, but to hold off those folks that essentially think that trails are somehow less important than other types of public investment that we need to make. And for me, it's been an amazing watch. It's been amazing to watch the maturity that has occurred with respect to the advisory committee, and I commend them for that. I would also say that the advisory committee has essentially been one of the key reasons that we have the Ashokan Rail Trail, the amount of advocacy that came out from members of the, of the trails community, and I'm going to use that at large, and the advisory committee essentially allowed us to put policy documents through a legislature and then follow those policy documents with actually design money and funding. And for me, that's, that's a, that's a critical thing for us to, to be able to do. And it's not without those, without that advocacy, some things get lost trying to make things, trying to do some things forward from a planning perspective. I do want to say that 2021 is going to be a busy year for trails in the county. Midtown Linear Park, we would expect to go to construction by April, hopefully. If the legislature passes the necessary resolutions in March. And we also anticipate that we're going to be able to settle some right-of-way issues on the Kingston Rail Trail, which connects Washington Avenue out to the Route 209 corridor shortly. And that may be able to go to construction by the end of this year, by, by the fall of this year as well. That's ready to go. We just need to, we need a piece of right-of-way that we are having a heated discussion with the current landowner with. And then we are engaged at a Transportation Council level. We're engaged in a study on the U and D Corridor up in the Pine Hill area. That study should come to a close by the end of April into, into May. You should stay tuned for some public meetings coming up and some releases of a final draft for comment. That is, that's closing one of the gaps in a, in a critical area that essentially connects Bel Air Ski Center to about 1,000 acres or 2,000 acres of DEC land using the old U and D Corridor. And from a policy perspective, the legislature has agreed that railroads should not run in that area. So the county is, we're free to essentially explore what a trail would look like, how much it would cost, and what the design and where the interconnections would be. And that study was, was undertaken by the Transportation Council. It was led by Chris White before he left, and it's now being led by Brian Slack. You should also know that we completed a study of the Waukeah Valley Rail Trail in and around the Village of New Paltz. It was called the Waukeah Valley Opportunity Rail Trail Opportunity Study. We have had some conversations with our Greenway folks and our, and our Empire State Trail folks that if there's any money left over from that, from the Empire State Trail, they would like to see us essentially move to improve that section of the Waukeah Valley Rail Trail to a more urbanized section because it gets such heavy use. And then last but not least, the county was approached by OSI, the Open Space Institute, to take a look at that section of gap that essentially exists from the city of Kingston out to the Ashokan Rail Trail along the U and D Corridor to see whether or not there's an opportunity to commit that connection. And to be frank, OSI has indicated a willingness to actually spend its own money to build that trail if it's not used for railroad purposes in the future. So there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of planning activity taking place. And we would anticipate that the county will continue to invest in trails moving forward. And we're hoping that we can, we can see some trail construction in Ellenville to make that connection in Ellenville. That's a critical connection. And the last critical connection that we mentioned is Sean Gumm. And we have the state prison system that literally is blocking a 38-mile trail that could extend all the way from Kingston all the way down into the Hamlet of Walden as an uninterrupted off-road trail system. And we're hoping that we could convince the Department of Corrections and others to allow us through the prison land.
Brilliant.
Dennis, could I say something? Just, I want to thank Carl. So in the town of Marlborough, we just opened our first trail. And although it's not a long trail, it's about two miles ago. So you could go down to the east and see the river. But I can't tell you how many people have called me up and thanked me for that trail. And it was a trail committee headed up by Tony Falco that did that. And Carl helped us out tremendously, so I wanted to thank Carl. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a GeoGagliardi City of Kingston, Brooks and Brooks Land Surveyors. I just want to say, I've always had a big pleasure of drawing the maps that we've done for you. And just to touch on Dennis, we're hoping to work with that connection from Washington Avenue to Hurley and finish up that connection because I think that's a vital connection for this whole rail trail project.
Yeah, we, we came up with a saying many years ago, I think, when we did the open space plan. And even before that, it was, was sold, it was called connecting open spaces with built places. And that's, that was the first thing that we tried to, we tried to, I mean, this goes back almost 15 years ago now, to make the connection into Kingston. But we, to the, that's the success we need. You shouldn't have to be able to get in a car in order to use a trail.
Hey, Dennis, Vincent McGlocklin here. When do you, I know it's probably going to be a while, but is the discussion going to start as far as linking the town of Sargertes to any of those networks?
Sorry, Dennis. That, there's, and therein lies the challenge. The, the short answer is, is that I think the most important thing is to provide the linkages in and around the village. And so we, we take a look at, for example, Washington Avenue out towards the high school, out towards Hits into Cantine's Field to make that a walkable, viable, bikeable system out through there. Take a look at the Barclay Heights area. What can we do in that area to make that walkable and bikeable? And then finally, if there's ever any development out at Winston Farm, to make sure that the Winston Farm development includes public, public access and public trails. And then perhaps a way to get across the bridge from the thruway and get back to the village in that, in that, in that, in that system as well. So we want to sort of make it opportunistic. But there is a long, there is a long-range goal that was originally talked about from the Greenway is to make the connection along the Hudson River. It's a difficult, it's a difficult connection to make, but it's one I think we should aspire to and one that we would hope to see in the, in the town's open space plan as well as, as well as in regional plans, that that, 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 that gets called out. So once that gets called out, you can be a lot more bold. You can be a little bit bolder in making those recommendations with respect to individual projects.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you to the trails group. Carl, thank you, Kevin. Always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving us the time to present and share. And, and I'll put my email in the chat and anybody can reach out to us if they have any questions or requests. Thanks much.
Okay. Moving to public comment. Bob, are there?
Right, well, tonight we have presenters for King, for the Hutton Brickyards. They'll be making presentations during that referral. I don't know if anybody else is, wants to speak under public comment. They can raise their hand now if they want to. Okay.
Okay. If the folks from Hutton are present, we could move them up to the top of the listing. If folks are in agreement. If anyone objects, let me know.
So Rob, you want to get up your screen or what do you want to do?
I'm going to do that right now. Dennis, do you want to give a little overview for the planning board? We have a lot of new, just, what do you want me?
Okay, so me on the referral process?
Yeah, just so we, but we have three new members tonight, so it would be probably appropriate to do that.
And it'll be very short while Rob gets his presentation up on the screen. So a couple of things I think that it's, it's important to know. One of, one of it is the need to recuse. The recusal language is built into state law. So in order, it essentially is this, if, if you sit on a local board and your local board is going to be considering the application in front of, in front of the county planning board, you must recuse yourself. There's other reasons for accusations. For example, if you have a conflict of interest, you work for an engineering firm, the engineering firm has done work on the project, or you're involved in some other way, in, from a family perspective, or have other financial interests in the, in the application, you must recuse yourself. And so when you hear us go through the process, the first thing that the chair will ask is are there any recusals? If you have those conflicts, you should recuse. The other thing I think you should know is, is that because we're in a Zoom meeting, rather than essentially ask everybody, which could be a tedious process, ask everybody to, to vote yes or no. We simply ask for people, whether those, whether there's anybody opposed or whether there's any abstentions. So we will count your vote as being for the project unless you say you abstain or unless you say you're opposed.
Got it.
This is Mitchell Cohen. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell.
All right, let me get this going here.
So our first project we'll be reviewing tonight will be the Hutton Brickyards project. We're going to do them together? Or are we doing them separate?
Well, it's special permanent site plan, so, oh no, it's, yes, it is. So we'll be doing those both together. And I had asked the applicant to just give us a brief overview of the scope of the project just because we have a lot of new eyes on it for the first time. And so they should understand where we are at the macro scale and what is actually before us tonight. Because what's before us tonight isn't actually all that large in terms of the overall, the project, so.
So if the applicant could go ahead and do that?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board and Rob and Dennis, thank you for the opportunity to be heard tonight. My name is Joe Ariel. I'm of counsel to Veneziano and Associates. We're legal counsel to the project. For the overview, I'd like to turn it over to Kevin McManus. And Kevin, I think has joined us by a phone. I want to make sure that, that he can be heard. Kevin, you want to try to chat there?
Which number is his? I know he called in. Is it the 914 or 845?
Uh, it's, I'm sure it's the 914, but I'm going to tell you in a second. Hang on. Well, he's checking. Do you have my attendance jotted down?
Yeah, I do. I got you when you came in, Matt. Thank you.
So Rob, he's 914-403-3568. Do you see that number?
Yep, okay. Kevin, you should be a lot able to talk. Kevin? Okay. Asking on you. Okay, there we go.
Hi, good evening. Sorry, sorry for the, uh, interruption here. Um, yeah, so we've got a, uh, we've got basically a, uh, a proposal for a site plan amendment. Uh, that includes enhancement system previously approved hospitality components. Uh, we have several, uh, you know, probably, uh, two dozen, uh, cabins and trailers out that we're proposing to use. Basically is year-round hotel rooms, uh, on the site. And, uh, the improvements that we're proposing that go along with those to kind of enhance the, uh, experience on the job. Are some spa treatment trailers. Uh, also, we're proposing, uh, seasonal outdoor dining and lounge area. In one of the old drying sheds, uh, we're working with the health department on that as well as the city of Kingston. Uh, we've got some landscape, hardscape and softscape improvements, uh, that are proposed throughout the site. All again to, uh, really focus the, the project more on the hospitality component. If you remember a couple of years ago, we, we were focused a lot on large events, uh, where, where they may happen. But we're really, really, uh, getting to, uh, getting to kind of more of a hotel use for the site because it's spectacular, uh, Hudson frontage. We also have some fencing that's proposed and, and Robert coined this perfectly. We're really not, we really don't have a significant number of, of, uh, site plan changes that we're proposing. Uh, on top of that, we're proposing a, uh, a crushstone, uh, parking area on Linsley Avenue. And a reuse of an old roadway that connects Linsley Avenue down to North Street. Or basically a private limited use, uh, golf cart, uh, pickup truck. Uh, trail driveway that would connect Linsley Avenue down to North Street. Which basically just gives a, a more attractive approach to the property. Um, so. That, that's basically it. Uh, we've been, we've been making improvements now to the property since two thousand sixteen. Uh, if anybody, uh, has been down there and had been down there in two thousand fifteen and sees the way it looks now. Uh, it's a, it's a spectacular transition that's taken place. Um, and we're really excited about, we've got a, a hotel group that's a, a national firm. They're called Salt. Uh, and you can look them up online. They've got some really cool boutique, uh, hotels. Uh, and they're going to be managing operations for the entire property from here on forward. So, uh, they're experts. We're looking to them for guidance on what they need for, uh, amenities. And this is what we've come up with and, um, that's basically it. Right? So.
Robert, we just. I'll, I'll, I'll open up, I'll, I'll let everybody just ask questions of the applicant at the moment, but I, I can take us through the rest of the presentation too.
Before, before you go anywhere, uh, go ahead, go ahead, bro, go ahead.
Okay. Well, okay, just what you're seeing right now is the master plan for the site, not the specific elements. And I'll just really quickly show you. So this was the Linsley Avenue parking lot here. There's a connector road that goes all the way down to here. Uh, part of the plan is they're moving these, uh, units in, out of an RR zone into a, uh, into the RF. R zone, I believe, RF eight zone, so direct use.
Yep.
And also there are some minor modifications to this, which was going to be a restaurant. Now it's more of a, uh, uh, concierge and a staff room services building. And there's some, also some amendments. And let me go to the next slide actually, because I think that shows it better. This is just really the master plan. What you can see, when we first saw this plan, you were seeing the glamping and the, um, the events. Now we have a fa- the eight phases and we have the Hotel Cabone. So we're, staff is pleased about that with respect to, uh, increasing the density and the potential of the site. Uh, so this plan here, this is actually the site, the site plan that's before the board now. So like I mentioned, this is the, uh, parking on Lindsay. You can, Linsley, you can see the road, the trail that's going through here. We do have, that's just for carts, correct? It's not for, intended for, uh.
That's correct. Yes, it's, it's, it's for carts and, and there would be some limited, uh, capacity for emergency use as well as an alternate means of, uh, egress to the site.
Right. So this is the, uh, those moved glamping socks, which are actually not glamping anymore, but, um, RV units.
Where do they move to, Rob?
That's where I believe, correct?
No, they'd move down into here, right?
Show me. So I don't.
Uh, my understanding would be is they would, they would actually move into this area here somewhere.
They, they're, they're moving east, east of, uh, of North Street.
That's what, yeah.
Up, up by what's referred to as building three, uh, on the site plan.
Okay, that's, that's what we've drawn.
Okay. See how that parking area over here. Uh, building over here, some slight amendments and over in here, there's some. Changes in there as well. Uh, I can zoom in some more. It's on my next slide. So this was the original, that's what's being moved. Those are the kind of units that they're proposing on site?
Yeah, we have, uh, we have cabins and we have, uh, a few what are referred to as escape trailers. Uh, we, we have twenty, uh, twenty-four cabins, uh, which are spectacular, uh, individually built, uh, cabin units that are on site now.
This is the original location of some of those escape units, I guess you call them. Uh, let's see. So now you can see where some additional cabins are being moved over in here. On this part of the site plan. And also you're seeing, this is the parking area.
It's the parking area down by the river, right? That's not the parking area up on the, up by.
No, that's not, no, that's, that's, this is central to the site.
That's what I thought.
That was approved in a, in a prior site plan.
That's correct, yeah.
This is approved in a prior site.
Thanks, Kevin.
So some comments and some of these comments come from the, uh, city Kingston Plan Board as well. Uh, there was a need for a variance for the dumpster at twenty-eight north. That was the, uh, building I talked about. That was the, uh, former restaurant, was originally proposed as a restaurant use. Still need a variance on that. At the moment, don't have lighting details for a lot of the areas. So I'll need lighting levels. Particularly for the Linsley parking area and for various glamping sites, just so we understand what the, uh, overall lighting levels are. Uh, signage details, especially with the, uh, new Linsley Avenue area. Um, you mentioned the emergency response, but we just want confirmation from emergency responses that they do. In fact, confirm they have adequate access to that trail. And we had a question regarding parking as an allowed use in that RR zone. I'll go to the Ariel real quick just to show everybody. Let's be. There we go. So this is the site. As you may notice that the, uh, the site plan was flipped, uh, on its side. This is now north to south.
So. So that the parking lot is proposed up in this area here, Rob. So it's up in this area here, am I correct?
Yes.
Then the road goes down this way through here and the glamping facilities and the cabins are down here and here.
That's.
You, can you turn on the, uh, the zoning map?
That's where I was going.
Thank you.
So as you can see, that is in an RR zone. So the city and the, uh, applicant, they're going to have to think about that as an old. That's not necessarily allowed use. There may be a petition to rezone that portion of property, which may make some sense considering. You have. What you have in that area, don't really have single-family residential in that area. It's maybe ill-suited into that particular area.
So the, the required modification is, is, is more of a, you need to, you need to make a decision. I mean, as to whether or not you're going to allow commercial, a commercial parking lot in a, in a triple R zone to serve a facility. That is not in a triple R zone. And, and generally case law says you're not supposed to do that. But that's up to the city to make, to make that determination. And then the, the other question is, is we could basically say that the city should consider, um, whether or not could seek to rezone that site. Given, um, what, what I would call a, a scale of, a, a scale of a master plan that is talking to use that site. Which would again, not be consistent with zoning in terms of the master plan concept that they've, they put out there. So now may be a good time to consider it. And, and I would add that the applicant, um, can build his facilities. Um, because he certainly has enough parking on site to, to, to meet his facilities without building the parking on Lindsay Avenue. The parking on Lindsay Avenue is, is more of a, trying to cut down on traffic on North Street, which has a, a trail system associated with it. And it's not the best access either. So we really don't have a good access point to this site. But, um, what the applicant is doing, trying to do is, is, uh, essentially provide a different, a different set of accesses than along North Street itself.
And, and I'll say too, the, this is Joe Ariel again, um, we've been, uh, working with and will continue to work with, um. Uh, Corporation Counsel on the, the zoning issue. We do think it, uh, and, and, and if the county planning, um. You know, wants to sort of positively recommend a future consideration of, of, of zoning, that, that's, that would be fine with us. Uh, with respect to this particular site plan, I think Dennis has, has characterized it exactly right. The, the city would, we would expect the city to have to make a determination about how to handle it in this particular application. And we're working with Corporation Counsel on that issue to make sure that it's done properly.
Yeah, we, and, and I appreciate that, Joe. We would caution that. Once, once the determination is made, it opens up the rest of the city for this kind of activity. If they determine that, that you can put commercial facilities in, in triple R zones and to service commit other commercial facilities. It's going to be a, it's going to be a precedent that set, that set citywide.
Right, we're, we're aware of, and, and I think they're aware of, you know, those cautions and, and, um. A- and we appreciate the, we appreciate the comment.
Motion to support staff, Watkins.
Okay, Mike Baden.
Who, who was the first?
It was Watkins and Baden.
Do we have any recusals, Chair?
Any recusals? Abstentions? Discussion?
I would like to make a, a motion to the board to consider as an advisory comment to, um. Uh, advise the city of Kingston to, uh, go ahead and look at that. I, I'm not sure how that would work, but to basically what you guys all said, that, uh, they should probably look at some sort of rezoning. Rather than, uh, unallowed use, just, just because of what, uh, Dennis just said. You don't want to open up a can of worms citywide. Maybe an, as an advisory, uh, as an advisory comment?
So that's an amendment to the motion that's on the floor?
I thought, I thought the motion said that, said what he's saying, what Gina was saying.
No.
No, it's not.
Yeah, you were going to make a recommendation to the, to the city for the rezoning, correct? The, the required modification says parking allowed in use in RRR. But I, they were discussing the fact that we, we don't want to get a variance or something like that on it. We would rather make an advisory comment to see. Um, I'd be, look at some sort of rezoning for this issue.
So clearly, Mr., clearly, Mr. Wat-
Am I correct on that?
Clearly, Mr. Watkins thought that, that, that my comment was included in the recommendation. So one would presume that we have a motion to, uh, we have a motion to amend, amend the motion relative to, um. Relative that, to that recommendation to positively talk to the city about, you know, uh, as an advisory. Uh, about, uh, uh, considering a rezoning here. We, is there a second to Mr. Joe?
I'll second it, McGlocklin.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second on the amendment. Any opposed?
May, hold, well, go ahead. On the, to amend the motion, I'd like to be heard on it, but yeah, let's get the motion, I guess, on the floor.
Thank you.
All right.
Hearing none opposed? Any abstentions? Sorry, Jer.
Okay. Any opposed? Any recusals still? Abstentions? Okay, um, further discussion or no?
Uh, may I, Mr. Chairman? I, 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 I just, I want to make sure that I understand what, and, and that the board understands the, the amendment to the motion. If the idea is that there should be an, an affirmative sort of, you know, nudge, uh, as part of the recommendation to the planning board. That, that in the big picture here, because again, as, as, as Dennis and Rob and, and, and Kevin from our side has mentioned. You know, there, there's kind of a master plan concept in play here. And we have always anticipated that getting to the finish line here probably, um. It's probably advisable to, to modify the zone, uh, either in a rezoning or with zone text amendments. To, to, to make this a conforming use in every respect. I, but I, I want to make sure that that's not in, that's not in lieu of.
That's correct, Joe.
What, what, what Dennis first put on the table, which is also saying, look, this, the, the city's got to consider. This issue with respect to this site plan application and, and that's a city determination. I- am I understanding that right, Dennis?
That's correct, Joe.
Dennis, for, for clarification, we were doing that recommendation as an advisory comment, correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
The city can choose to follow it or choose to ignore it without any, any repercussions or.
One would hope, one would hope the city would read the case law.
Right.
All right. Any opposed to this? Motion?
So.
So.
We need a, we need a, we need a vote on, we have a first and a second for Mr. Watkins and, and I'm sorry, Mr. Watkins and Mr. Baden. Uh, so we have a vote on the amendment that passed. We need a vote on the, uh, on the, on the initial motion.
All right. So do we have any opposed initial motion? None, you passed.
You need abstentions too, Joe, uh, Jer.
Are there any abstentions to this?
Okay. Now we're done.
Okay.
Thanks very much for the opportunity to be heard and, uh, and thanks for everything you do. Welcome to the new members. And, uh, uh, the, the board, um, and your staff does a tremendous job. So thank you very much. Have a good night, guys.
Night.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, uh, Robert, let's go back to the beginning in Allenville. Thank you.
Excuse me. Any recusals?
Okay, so Villas Allenville, Local Law Number Three, twenty, two thousand twenty-one. It's a zoning statute amendment. It basically is an accessory apartments law is what it comes down to. Uh, defines a principal building, which is the primary use of the lot, with building on the lot. And then. It only, then there should only be one principal building per lot in residential districts, RA, R one and R two. And no more than one principal building on a lot is new. That, that was the original, what I wrote before. So accessory buildings are now allowed, may be used for residential purposes, provided that they conform to the area and dimensional standards of the zone. They can, uh, maximum six hundred square feet, one bedroom, but if the lot exceeds the minimum lot area by twenty percent or more, they can be two. Uh, they have a parking standard and one additional parking space for uses other than that. Um, and what was my screens covering the one up? And one accessory building for residential purposes on a lot maximum. Staff comments are as follows. Obviously, we got the referral form and the draft local law. Uh, initial comments were, we were very supportive of this. We approved the use of accessory apartments as another alternative to get, getting affordable housing within Ulster County and Villas Allenville. In this case, um, Dennis developed a kind of a laundry list of different, and we're going to be expanding this. That different types of accessory apartments. And they should be allowed as long as they're in compliance of the building codes, the underlying zoning bulk standards. But there should be allowance for, and we're going to make this an advisory comment, that they should consider detached backyard cottages, which is what they're concerned in this place. what they're concerned in this place, attached additions to existing home with a separate entrance and kitchen, interior and attic or the basement or above garage additions and garage conversions. So another accessory building. So just basically a way of spelling out in the local law ways that they can provide accessory apartments and not limiting them that way, but as long as they can conform under the bulk standards, they should be allowed to go forward.
Geo Gagliardi will make a motion to support that.
Scott McCarthy, second.
Rob, Mike Baden, I just got a quick question on it.
Sure.
I don't know those zoning districts in Ellenville. Do they allow multifamily housing? So if there were, say, you know, two house, two separate buildings that were part of a multifamily complex, would that not be allowed in this district? Because it says only one building is the principal use, so.
Well, let me go back. So you have a primary building.
Right.
So you're no, you're allowed one principal building and then an accessory building. So that'd be if you had, if it, let's just for say it allowed multifamily building in the zone. They could still have one accessory apartment and an accessory building, provided me met the
Right, but it couldn't be, say, an apartment complex that had two separate structures with multiple multiple dwellings in it. I mean, I don't know if those, what the acreage is on those. I'm assuming the R2 might be two acres. I just, I'm concerned it's limiting multifamily housing, but.
I don't think they allow them in these zones.
Okay, if that's the answer, then then that's a fine answer, so.
So I have a question also. Do they require the principal building to be owner occupied?
Not for accessory dwelling units, no.
Because New Pox does. Just wondering.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. How about buildings that were built on the on the RA, one, one A, so forth? Nineteen eighty? Are there are there dates in the new law that says after this date?
No, there would be no requirements. The idea is essentially here for accessory dwelling units is to make your housing stock work harder by essentially, or your lots to work harder by essentially allowing accessory dwelling units to be can, to be added to that without without a density, without a density problem or without a restriction with respect to whether it's an existing building or a new or a new building.
But you're not concerned about how this turns into Airbnb instead of actual housing?
No, one of the things that we could, we did look at is to whether or not they should, they should basically restrict the new, the accessory dwelling units from being Airbnbs. That that's a great comment, and we can make that comment.
Yeah, and we can make that required mod too, actually.
Yeah.
So that's going to be a required mod and the others are all.
Right, so I think first you have the vote on the initial motion, then if you want to make a second motion, go ahead on that. So I mean, I would vote to decline this motion first and then go with the second.
No, to just go ahead and
Can we just do like the last?
I will make a motion to support adding the required modification to the advisor.
Mr. McCarthy, you were the second on this.
I agree.
Okay, so I have a motion and second to add required modification with respect to restrictions on short term rentals.
Any discussion on that motion? Or any opposition? Abstentions? Okay, the modification's been made. Now we'll go back to the original motion.
No, I think we had, we, they amended the original motion.
Motion, we're only going to do it once.
You only have to do it once. Geo was kind enough to amend his emotion.
Okay. And we pass the motion.
Blue Stone?
Blue Stone City. Any recusals?
Okay. City Kingston, so this is Lucas Avenue. This particular proposal is outside of five hundred foot rule, even though Lucas Avenue becomes
I should recuse myself on this. I'm a consultant to the developer.
That's right.
Thank you, man.
So Lucas Avenue, it's not a county route until it hits the town Ulster boundary. It's so it's more than five hundred feet from the town Ulster boundary. It's more than five hundred feet from any parks or public buildings. So this is actually advisory comments only. So the site in question is here's my annotation. This site here. Access will be off of Blue Stone Court. And on to Lucas Avenue. This will be used as a trail and emergency access only, but it's pretty narrow. Let me switch to the PowerPoint. All right, so it's thirty-two, two bedroom, one three bedroom, fourteen one bedroom for forty-seven unit multifamily apartment complex. It's in the R4 zone which allows multifamily. In this case, it meets all the bulk standards for the city with respect to that, so. First off, want to compliment the city on and the applicant on that, because this is a, this is an area where you do have a number of multifamily complexes, and this adds to the housing options in the area. One thing to note, they do have covered parking with solar panels. They've been very responsive to the neighbors' comments with respect to landscaping and trying to keep the view limited from the the proposal. Let's see, so this is what it's going to look like. From there. So again. So this is Blue Stone Court. That's your access. One thing you don't have, just minor comment about having a pedestrian connection back to Lucas Avenue from the proposal. I want to make sure that there's adequate. There are some, they are doing, um let's see, what else? They do have bike racks actually on the proposal. That was actually going to be a comment on it, and they actually have them. Let me move to some of my comments. Lighting levels are good for the site. Landscaping plan is pretty good, particularly with adjacent neighbors. Let's see, probably use more landscaping in the parking lot to break up along the middle of the parking lot. This is what it's going to look like when you have building elevation. So all our comments, like I said, had to be advisory because it's outside of five hundred foot rule. Again, we want to reiterate, reiterate that the density is appropriate, it meets zoning statute requirements. The comment I made about the pedestrian connection, city has an executive order and affordable housing code on the table, if not already approved that they'll have to comply with. And we just want to make sure that in this instance that they do comply with that for I believe it's going to be five or more units. They have to do ten percent set aside. And I can erase the bicycle storage because we do a bicycle rack.
Rob, is there any recreational, like a playground or anything on the site for kids?
They, they are very clear, walking distance to Forsyth's Park, so the, they've, they're, they do not. They felt they were close enough to force it to accommodate. That is the recreation area.
If there's a, Glenn, there's a payment, there's a payment in lieu that's substantial within the city per unit, and they are within walking distance of Forsyth Park. It's just down the street from them.
Thank you.
I would ask, I would ask Matt, he doesn't have to answer. I would ask Matt, where where the Tudor Stire buildings came from? I was like
I I happen to know. They're, they're very much related to the styles of the homes on Blue Stone Court.
Oh, okay.
By the same architect.
Right, the architect built, I believe, three of the book homes on
Because they're certainly not related to anything in the city of Kingston.
Rob, are they, are they doing anything with with green, green energy other than the solar panels or?
Do they have the solar panels? They're doing low impact design or number rain guards on the site. Also, let me go back here to the site plan, and I'll show you one little thing. These are EV charging stations on the site.
Nice.
It's a well, it's a well thought out site, but we don't have anything with respect to the installation codes, whether they're Energy Star, whether they're Pass of House or whether they're green, you know, any of that. We don't have any of that, whether the the city's adopted a stretch building code, we just don't know. If you want to, the board can make a suggestion as an advisory comment that the city consider energy conservation with respect to these. I suspect that this, these are gas, because there's gas available in the city, you know. But if you, if the board so desires, we can ask the city that they should consider, you know, some additional discussion with respect to green building standards.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
And and these are being marketed as to what what price range. I know the city just has that new either policy or ordinance of of one in ten has to be affordable. So does that mean?
So we, I, we don't know what the mark, we didn't have anything with respect to where they're marketing them on. But and what Rob's comment has to do with an executive order that was signed by the mayor, which is, which is one in five.
One in five, okay.
So that's twenty percent. Has to be affordable.
Yes, the city, the city's going through that right now, and I'm sure they're, they're going to be looked at very carefully to handle that situation. With that said, I would like to make a motion to approve the comments and to commend the developers for picking a very good site. I'm from that neighborhood and at first I was like, oh, boy, no, 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 but this actually looks really good and it actually does fit exceptionally well here.
Geo, and your motion includes a comment with respect to, with respect to energy standards?
Of course.
Okay.
I'll second that, McLaughlin.
Thanks, Scott. Any abstentions?
Yes, abstain.
Pardon?
No, Matt, you recuse yourself, right?
Recused.
Oh, is that what I'm saying?
Yeah, you don't have to, nope.
Any further discussion? Or any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Let's move on.
All right. So we're going to be moving to Lloyd now.
Scott McCarthy recused. Thank you, Scott.
All right. There we are. All right, so Towne Lloyd, this is a very critical intersection here at South Chippel Hill Road and Mayor Drive and also at the regular Chapel Hill Drive, so.
Where's the site, Rob? Would help us with?
The site, though, for this instance, is right here. Off of it. And so what we're proposing is a mixed use building, first floor, commercial office space, commercial and or office space, I should say. Second floor is all apartments. Access off of nine W is going to be right in, right out.
Not nine, not nine W, it's off of, it's off of that ramp.
It's always off of the ramp off of nine W.
There you go.
So that's right in, right out. Full access will be here. Let me go to the site plan for y'all. I guess we're going to break yours again. Towne Lloyd, so twenty-two apartments over commercial office uses. This is what we have. This is the site plan, like I mentioned, you know, right in, right out off that ramp over in here. Full access on Mayor Drive. Buildings are pushed to the front. You have greater acre disturbance, so you do have some stormwater over in the southeast corner over here. I do have sidewalks that wrap around the building. Let's see, one question, comment that we have on this is you're going to have twenty-two apartments. There does not seem to be a lot of public space associated with this proposal. We would like to see, I'm going to comment about this, either larger sidewalk areas, you can put outdoor meeting places, dining places, something that's an amenity for the people who live on the site and for the people who come to the site. You might have a restaurant use or things like that. You might want to be able to take advantage of outdoor dining as well. Right now, these sidewalks really don't accomplish that, and there's no designated space that makes it a site that really draws a person to say, I want to live here. So from that perspective. So there's that. Lighting levels are okay. Let me go through, go through what I got here. Okay, so that's landscaping plan, pretty robust landscaping pan for it. You can see the stormwater, again, the southeast corner. Lighting levels are good, all full cutoff LED, dark sky compliant. That's what, this is actually the Tudor comment, Dennis.
Here's another one.
Yes.
You get two of them. It's like the whole new, the whole new style came back and came back.
That's the southern view of it, and then we're going to wrap around through the parking lot. So that's the view from the southwest. And from the northwest.
So yeah. To Rob, just, just, can you go back to the site plan one more time?
Absolutely.
I just want to look, I'm looking with that access point. It actually looks like it may be NICE dot jurisdiction.
Yes.
Next to nine W. So maybe we ought to add a NICE dot comment in there.
Yeah.
No.
It's not nice that.
That looks prior to the, to the Yeah, it's prior to that pull off, man, that that's
It's in the designated right-hand turn lane at that point, but it actually becomes southward.
So I know that there's been a substantial, just so everybody understands, we've been, we've been working with the applicant who's been sending us materials to DPW in terms of what's going to happen on the slip ramp. There's going to be some changes to the slip ramp relative to the lane widths there. We've also asked for some changes to the intersection between Mayor Drive and the slip ramp so that people that are going in there know that they can't make a left coming out of Mayor Drive. They have to make a right coming out of Mayor Drive. But I think we should make the comment, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the applicant has worked with DOT with the right in, right out. I don't see a problem with it. We should make the comment that they need to coordinate back with NICE dot.
Yes.
And that's not in your original recommendation.
Right, we should have that in there.
Yeah, Dennis, I don't think they have a choice. They have to go through NICE dot on that.
I know, but but we usually make the comment to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, so we'll just make them coordinate. We know they already are, but we'll just, we always issue a report on, so we'll do that.
Has there been a suggestion to just do away with that in and out right there, period? Because I'll tell you, that is a tough situation right there.
I think the, I think the in is easy. There may be some kind of conversation about the out, but the in is easy at that location. You wouldn't want to take the in away.
How many people are going to come out of there and not go South Chapel and just jump into nine W? That that's a tough situation.
Anecdotally, actually, Dennis, I, whenever I go that way, people are so frequently going into that right lane and then realizing they're stuck there and having to make the left out. So you do have a lot of traffic conflict.
Exactly.
Yeah. So that's why, that's why we're making the idea to coordinate with NICE dot. We don't have to solve that problem.
Yeah, it's up to DOT. If DOT thinks that's safe, God bless them.
Right.
Did you say this was possibly going to be mixed use as well?
It is mixed use.
So how are they going to get trucks in there? Is there enough?
Well, they're, they're not talking about big trucks in here. They're only talking about box trucks or something of that nature, but they could, they could park in the parking lots.
Right, and it looks like they have adequate access to move and swing through the park, the lot. We could ask them for a turning template just to verify that, though.
So now we have a comment for NICE dot and a comment for truck turning templates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to ask them about, you know, green buildings and bike racks and EV charging stations?
Now we have a comment with bike racks. Now we have a comment with bike racks, B V charging stations and green building standards.
I did have the bike rack.
Is there a bike rack there? I don't know.
No, there is not.
I can't.
We, I think, I thought we made the comment because we had, we had somebody had a bike lane along South Chapel, South Chapel Hill Road. Along that, that. That area. So I thought we had made that comment.
Yeah, we did make the bike rack.
Yeah, okay. All right. So now we go back to your recommendations, Rob?
Sure. One moment. Too far.
So now we've, we've added nice dot as required modifications, and then on the advisory side, we're gonna add. Nice doc and bike racks is, and on the advisory side, we're gonna add green building standards, right?
Right.
That okay with everyone?
Recharging stations?
I'm sorry, and recharging stations. I apologize. I forgot that.
And the turning radius is Dennis.
And the turning radius is gonna be under nice dot work. Yeah, that will be under required modifications.
Right, and the advisory comment actually deals not on the site itself, but I mean, that. Location with the ramp, but also the. Focus of the traffic work on the area focused on that intersection that's immediately to south of here, which is. Already a level service F and E. And they need to come up with a long term solution for that. And one possible suggestion is like creating an improved, um, improvement district much like was done behind the mall. Years ago to get by into a support such a development from redoing the traffic in the area.
Motion to approve staff comments as amended. Mike Baden.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Geo.
Geo Gagliard.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Any abstentions? And Scott, we already have you recused. Motion passes. Thank you. On tomorrow.
All right. All right. So.
Any recusals?
So town Marlboro Resolution twenty of two thousand twenty one, this is their short term rental. Law. A lot of it is. Standard for what we see in the other towns with requiring safety plans, yearly fire and code inspections. Providing parking layout plans, providing garbage removal plans. Uh, requirement that they have to register with the county for the bed tax. Uh, they also note that only one, only owner can register and must be resident of the town. One little question mark was the corporation. Uh, an owner, if they were in the corporation LLC or other business entity, they cannot own more than one in residential districts. It doesn't. State whether they could own more than one if it was in a commercial district. There also was unclear what zone. Um, B and B, uh, short term rentals were gonna be allowed. It, it didn't specify zones, so we're assuming at the moment town wide. But didn't specify. Uh, they do have a violation section and they do have provide. A clause where they can set the, a cap on the number of rental units to be permitted on an annual basis. One thing they didn't state in the law was usually you have a whole process section, like the Garner one we saw last month. You had details of what date all of them expire. We recommend as advisory comment that they. All terminate on the last day of the year. And they all go from the calendar year. So this way it's easy on the municipal staff to, uh, no, not have to juggle when everybody's individual permits expire. This way they all expire at the same time. There's also some additions to their minor site plan review for short term rentals and B and Bs. And it just lists some middle requirements that are required when they're. Uh, applying for site plan review for a short term rental or a minor. B and Bs and they're just standard. List of site plan. Materials, and then they also at the end of that provide a waiver provision for any that aren't applicable to that particular. Site.
So Rob, all reviews for short term rental go to the planning board?
Didn't state that.
All site plans go to the planning board, so.
All site plans do. They didn't say the permits and permits, I believe, are administrate.
Okay.
So require modifications on it. We recommend that they, like I said, they expire yearly, that they usually the thirty first of the year. Uh, they should specify which zones it's allowed in. If they are allowed in all zones, it should state that. Um, there's no discussion of primary residence. Owner or non-owner occupied. None of those are defined. We would like to see some discussion of that topic, particularly we, uh, support the use of the primary residence. Where?
Restrictions and restrictions on, on. On.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
With respect to only the. There's. So it's unclear as to whether it, it looks like the law allows for non-owner occupied, but. There are no definitions of the non-owner occupied and there's no. For example, we usually see definitions of host. In this case, I believe the host has to be within. I may be getting this and the Rochester one confused, because we do have the Rochester one on here tonight as well as this, but, um.
But you know, they don't restrict them. Is that correct, Rob?
Correct, so.
That's, that's, that's the comment here. The comment is there should be restrictions on non-owner, whether it's primary residents or non-occupied. There should be restrictions on them.
Well, typically what we do is. Primary residence for. For owner occupied, that they should be their primary residence. And for. Not, if they're gonna be allowed non-occupied, they should be capped, or they should allow for a cap. Which they are doing in this case.
Dennis, question.
Are they, Rob? Are they capping?
They do have, they do have, they have a cap. Let me go back.
Sorry, Mike.
It's okay.
So they have a number of rental units permitted, so. That it doesn't specify non-owner occupied or primary or vice versa, just the total number of permits.
Right, and, and do they allow them to own more than one in the town?
Not in residential areas. It was unclear whether they allow them to own more than one. If they're as part of an LLC. An owner, under their own name, cannot own more than one, apparently, according to the code, but. If they're part of an LLC, they can't own more than one. In residential districts, but it was silent on commercial.
Okay.
Follow me.
It's, it's. Designed to really confuse.
I have a quick question. No prohibition on multifamily. Units from being used for, uh. Short term rentals, and that's a consistent recommendation to county planning board to prohibit multifamily from being used. To deplete housing stock for, uh, short term rentals. And just greater specificity with the, um, quality of life issues, house rules, making sure that any.
Number of people per bedroom, maximum number per house.
But just making sure that anybody who's coming to it abides by the rules and making sure they're not creating a disturbance, things of that nature.
Okay.
So Dennis, my, my question is, does the county have a good? Way to define primary residence? Because if you look online, it's all over the map of how to define it.
Yeah. Where, where do you, where do you tell everybody you live with your income tax?
Okay.
Robert, this is Mitchell. I have a question. So does the county have a template as far as a definition of short term? How many days it is?
Less than thirty.
Less than thirty, okay.
They did have that in this. That was the one thing they did define.
Do they assume because they're limiting the number of people per bedroom that they're limiting the number of cars that need parking?
Don't know.
You know, last thing people want is cars all up and down the street.
That's the quality of life thing that we wanna be more specific about.
Yeah.
But if they gotta go through site plan review, that question can, can come up in site plan review.
Okay.
So those are the comments, unless you have, anybody has anymore.
I tell Mr. McCarthy, did I hear Mr. McCarthy had a comment or question? Or not? So we need a motion, folks.
I'll move it.
Conure will second it.
Thank you.
Did we say they were going through site plan review or only permitting?
There's permitting on the annual permits and site plan review to establish.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any abstentions?
Um, I wanna make sure that I'm recused. Cindy.
Word Cindy. Got you Cindy.
Thank you.
Okay, any abstentions? Any opposed? As, as. We go on from there. Okay. This is required months. Thank you. Now we move to Rochester.
All right. Going back to Ariel.
Recusals, Chair?
Any recusals for Rochester?
This is for the Henry Rich one, right? Correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I'm good. I don't need to recuse.
Okay, Henry Rich, this is a Hall and Accord. Right off of two oh nine. You got existing buildings on the single lot. Let me show you which ones they are. And this is the single lot, existing septic. They're going to be converting this building and this building. For the converting existing parry studio, the grocery, convenience store and office space. We had a gateway meeting on this, where we went through a lot of different. Configurations and mostly discussion about parking. The applicant has provided about, I don't know, about six or seven iterations of parking. And they've reduced the total number of parking on the site. And now have signs on the site indicating that there is a municipal lot behind the fire lot. Behind the fire department, where also staff will also park. So that solved that issue. Let me go to site plan. Sure. All right, so here we go. Like I said, office overflow parking will be in municipal lot. Received many inter, as you can see, five iterations of the alternate parking. Originally, there was gonna be some coffee provision on site. They decided. Not to do that and just be dry goods store. So. Existing septic should. Meet their, what their needs for that. Facility. Only comments on this are if any outstanding. Approvals from. The County Health Department and County D P W, this is a county route. That they should be. Uh, acquired. The permit should be completed. Otherwise, it's no county impact on this.
Required modification, which, which is it, Robert? Required modification? You got recommendations?
Yeah, I said it was required modifications. Lighting is good, by the way. Final approvals if necessary from Ulster County Health and Ulster County D P W is.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion. I got Geo.
I'll second it, Conure.
I got Conure as a second. Thank you, guys.
That's a good location of what, for what they're doing there.
Any additional discussion? I have a motion, a second. Any abstentions? And there were no recusals. Any opposed? It's approved. All right, let's move on to the next one in Rochester.
All right.
Schoolmaker.
Hey, Mike, if they would just stay open real late, I could have stopped there and got something to eat on the way home from the show.
Is the schoolmaker subdivision? Any recusals? None?
Okay. This is a three lot subdivision. It's existing farm. They're subdividing two lots off for children, for single family of homes. Uh, the rest will remain in agriculture. It is in the county agricultural district. There's no county impact on this.
Motion to support. Conure's second.
Dennis and Rob, if I can just add, this is part of the original land patent to the schoolmaker family dating back to the sixteen hundreds. Still, still in the same family.
That's amazing.
Still farming the same land.
That, that's, that's a, that's amazing.
Second, it's, I believe it's been noted as the second oldest farm in the United States.
Wow.
Who made the motion?
For them.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, it's passed. Uh. Rochester, local law two.
Mike Baden recusal on this one?
Hey, Mike, thank you.
All right, so this is the second time we're seeing the town Rochester's. Uh, short term rental law. And as you can see in yellow, we made two comments previously, made one about multifamily prohibition. The town has since agreed with that, added that to the law. They're also prohibiting on commercial or industrial parcels as well. Also. There was, we also made the comment about a cap on non-owner occupied. There have, the town is doing something a little bit different. They're doing a two percent. Of. I believe. Let's see if we can find it. That was original require modification, no longer stands, by the way. So the cap was on two percent of the, uh, I believe the tax bills. Or tax receipts they have on single family homes in the residential properties in the.
So no more than two percent of the total number of residential housing units could be non-owner occupied? Or no more than two percent of the nano of the residential housing units could be short term rounds?
Could be that, you're correct on the second one.
Okay. Cause I was gonna say two percent of, two percent's a lot, is a lot, is a lot on. But if it's all of them, that's fine.
Right.
Good.
So no county impact on this. Actually, wait, 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 we did have a comment on it.
I was gonna say, I thought we, I thought we discussed.
Because they have this new section where they have alternative dwelling. Structures. Which allow travel trailers, campers, R Vs to be short term rentals. Now they have to require the special, the, the permit for the short term rental and also receive a transient rental permit. As well, so they have a special permanent transient rental permit required.
Oh, oh.
We recommend.
Aren't they allowing tents also? Didn't they wanna include tents?
Right.
Well, it's a camper or an R V or a travel tailor. It's close to a tent.
Yeah, but I think they specifically, I mean, I just thought I remembered the word pimp.
Yeah. Well, what's your recommendation, Rob?
Uh, I, I thought we, the recommendation we came up, came up was that they remove that clause from the statute.
That's kinda what I thought, that we removed the alternative short term rentals.
We did, we recommend they don't go down that road.
Can you go to your recommendation?
There already are some existing in the town.
Can you go to your recommendation?
Well, that, that's the recommendation. I think the. Originally, we didn't see the cap in there, but there actually was that cap.
Okay, so, but now your required modification is to remove the.
Right.
The alternative structures.
The, the alternative rent, uh, short term rental.
Structures, I think is what it's called. Okay.
I still make that motion to support staff.
Second it, Conure.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Any extent, any more discussion on this? Any abstentions? Mike, you're accused. All those opposed? Okay, it passes. Town authorities.
Any recusals?
Laverty.
Pardon? Who recused?
Laverty.
Thank you.
So this is the Gambino zoning amendment. What we have is a split zone parcel. And it's actually easier not to see it on the, uh. Aerial, but what was actually provided. Currently, there's a warehouse and tree service business on the site. And what they're proposing to do is make it single zone. So this is the current zoning. As you see the dotted line. Goes right across the line. Those single home, home sites don't exist currently, but that. Single line goes across, bisects. Those parcels in that. Area. The proposal would. Streamline it, go around and.
It's actually a down zoning, right?
Yes, it's, it's going, well, this is L D R two and M D R, actually.
Okay.
Is M D R. Uh, they could have done H B all along the fringe, but they kept this L D R in this area to the. It's actually, what you're actually seeing is the north of the site. On the, uh, left hand side of the screen, that's actually the north. And then. To the east will be the M D R, which makes sense for the residential community in there. And then the, the, uh, commercial use retains the business highway. So no county impact on this.
Make that motion. That makes sense right there.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Any abstentions? Any further discussion? Any opposed? Passes. Okay, town Ulster.
Town of Ulster.
Industrial arts.
All right.
Um, domes.
No, these are geodesic domes. They were originally created, and they actually went through us the site plan. They were gonna be a green grocery store and never.
I think they started out with, Anaconda Kay was gonna put a shop in there. Then it was a green grocer, and now it's a, now it's a brewery.
Right, so what they're, actually, it's not even a brewery.
No, it's just a, I'm sorry, I misspoke. You're right.
Yeah, it's a proposed beer garden and retail store and office space, actually. So let me go, so. That's Forest Hill Drive, by the way. Right as you're going to the Catskill Park. So there's not really much new construction. They're, they're making improvements to the site with the parking area and the lighting, all those hexi, uh, octagons out there. Not a, hexagons. You see out there are, um, outdoor seating for the beer garden. Comments on this are, and that's what it looks like right now. Comments are lighting levels, they're a little bit high. They should comply to the, uh, standards that are found in town. Town requires about under two and a half foot candles for parking areas.
There a landscaping plan?
Not much.
You have a little, um, no, not really very much.
I would think that if you're gonna wanna sit there, it'd be nice to have some kind of a vegetative buffer.
Uh. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're drinking, they don't care.
It's a garden without, it's a garden without plants.
I, you know, when they first put up those bubbles, I was so excited to what was gonna happen there. I'm glad, thank God, finally something decent is gonna happen there.
So we, but to get back to Cindy's, get back to Cindy's comment, we could ask him for a landscaping plan, right, Rob?
Your requirement for a landscaping plan, and maybe they can move some of those. I mean, you have the, um, existing separate reserve area, so you can't really move the seating onto that portion of the site, but if, maybe they can move, add some landscaping, more buffer between the, uh, Route twenty eight and the seating area, that would be good.
Any fencing? Fencing, right? Would you say that, Jer?
I said fencing.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea, particularly with between the roadway and the, uh, and the, and some of those, what's your call, some of those, uh. So we got, what's your required modifications now, Rob?
Right, well, they do have, let's see, they do have proposed evergreens along the frontage. Here, we don't, I wish they hadn't provided a, um, a simulation.
Where, where's, where's their actual ac- access point?
It's all four still drive.
All four still drive, office signalized intersection.
Just so you know, this over here is actually, these are all proposed evergreen. They should really consider some sort of mix of native species as opposed to just evergreens at that location as well.
The city view terrace is not a town road or anything, that's.
It is.
I mean, because it doesn't really show where the curb cut is there.
Oh, the curb cut is over in here.
Yeah, it's that shaded area, Tom.
Right here, Tom.
Okay, I thought, I thought that looked like a, just, is that a private road that, oh, I mean, they got two parking spots off the end of that.
Yeah, it's private back in there.
Okay.
As far as we know.
I can show you the aerial again if you want.
No, it just, it just looked strange that you, there's no real, I, it's hard to see the curb cut there and delineate what's on whose property. Let's put it that way.
I wanna get back to Rob's.
That city, that city view terrace is more of, more of an access road, if anything. I, I don't, I don't think it's even maintained by the town, is it?
Yeah, no, it is. Goes all the way up to a subdivision up back.
That, no, it's forest hill, you're talking about.
No, city view terrace.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's, that's more, that's more like.
Hold on.
Yeah, this is back to the aerial, so you can see that it's, that, that, that's more maintained by the by whoever's there. It's not really being that road.
There's a subdivision. I think that was a, that was possibly a, a connection to development that was possibly gonna happen there at some point.
Or that's the old road there, maybe, but the thing is that road or that access point on, on the tax map were there that you got now shows that the road is kind of within, inside that plot, but when you looked at the site plan, the, the property line looked like it was right down the middle of that road.
So this is a signalized intersection right here, right? The access road is, is literally almost exactly where it is now, and it's, and it's, and it's defined here. So I, I don't think we have an access issue here.
Okay, all right.
Right, but I wanna get back.
Nah, there's no access.
So I wanna get back to the comment with respect to landscaping and fencing, cause I think those are issues.
Right.
So Rob, you, can we go back to the site plan? Cause you were saying that they actually showed some landscaping, which you didn't, which I didn't realize was there.
Right, it was fuzzy, this, this thing, but there actually is a proposed evergreen hedge row.
From where to where, Rob? Can you annotate that?
I can. It goes from here. All the way here. I'm sorry, sorry for the blue on blue there.
Okay.
It goes along from there to there.
So what we're trying to do is ask them to extend that this way, right? In front of these, in front of these, in front of these tables.
And fencing would be a.
And, and a low fence in here, so people can't wand, can't, can't wander out into the road or throw cans at.
Right, that, that whole area, if they put them out in that blue area, that's subject to an occupancy permit from NYSDA, just so you know, that's in the.
Right, but, but the point being is, is they got room in here, they can move these tables around. They got room in here, they could extend that that way and add some fencing in there.
So extend the landscaping is the common.
Okay. All right, so the required modifications are now what, Rob?
Extend lamp, uh, landscaping.
Can we go to them so we can see them, or don't you have them?
Lighting levels.
Okay, so it's lighting levels and landscaping and some fencing, right?
And fencing, that is all.
Where are they, near dumpster? There's all these cans that they're going to have.
Eh, eh, yeah, I guess, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm hate when I start, as a county, start talking about dumpster locations, but.
I mean, just saying.
I'm, I'm fine with that, if that's what you want to add. So now we have dumpster, landscaping, and fencing.
How about signage?
Signage is okay.
Signage is okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I will make the motion to happily support the beer.
I will second that motion, and once again tonight, great location.
So Gio, Gio's got a second.
This is some really good locations tonight, like really good.
Who was the first on this, guys?
McLaughlin was the first.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Since I love this beer pro- garden project, I will happily support it. All right, we have a motion in a second, guys.
One second, and Mr. Alquist is recused. Uh, any abstentions? Any more discussion? So be it. It's passed.
Next recusal on this one as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
This is Farmbridge.
Farmbridge, let me go to aerial again, and we go to Tech City. This came up in EMBs. Or actually, the other, so existing building, Farmbridge is moving from one portion of Tech City to this portion of the building. I see Drew's raising his hand. Do you have a commentary? Oh, Drew is on phone, apparently. Hang on. One, oh, that's weird, okay. Anyway, so modification to this building is on the site plan. It's just adding a, um, there, there's some internal changes to the site. And Dennis just drew in a loading dock. In purple there, but I'll share the actual site plan. So, so this is existing site plan. There's your loading dock, you have turning radius on that, little bit more of a zoom in on it. There are four loading docks, by the way. And there you go. Side by side, before and after. And a little landscaping along the, uh, loading dock area as well. There's no county impact on this.
Is this, is this the property that the county owns, or is it next door?
That is correct.
Okay.
Motion.
Excepted.
Wait, who?
McCarthy had the motion.
And Conier seconded?
Mr. Connor, you're second?
I'll second it then.
Thank you, Mr. Conier.
Thank you.
We can't let you gave, make a motion, John. That would be unusual.
Hey, once in a while, gotta change things around.
We have a motion in a second, Jer.
Did we lose Jer? You there, Jer? Who's Jer?
I just unmuted.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, we have the motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Any abstentions? Any opposition? So be it. It's passed.
All right.
Hey, on to a worsening.
All right.
Any recusals?
All right, we're back to the, uh, bowling alley site that became self-storage and a Hertz rental car. We reviewed this many different times. They're making a slight amendment to the site. And let me go to the site plan. It's course from the mole station as you're about to enter Ellenville. So it's only a two thousand two hundred and fifty square foot, uh, another self-storage building toward the rear property. You can't see it from the road. I'll bring up the site plan, so it is. This building back here, they have a rear yard variance already granted to it. Which probably should have been referred to the Ulster County Planning Board and was not. But it, it joined, the back of this is the, uh.
Back, back of it's industrial, so.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a county impact on it, even if it.
Motion to approve staff comments.
No county impact. That's what it looks like from the road.
Second, who is the motion? Was that Baden?
Mike Baden, sorry.
And the second one?
Watkins.
Watkins, thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any, no discussion, any abstentions, any opposition? So be it.
Motion carries.
Stop.
All right, last but not least.
Any recusals?
All right, so it's the Bearsville Center, Bearsville, New York, right on two twelve. Making some modifications to an existing site. This is the site as it is right now. Let me, um.
Can you zoom in by the road, Rob? Just got by the road. Can you zoom in out so you can see the road?
I can. So let me, I'll, I'll, let me draw on it so you can see. So they're proposing more parking in this area here. Is what they're doing. They're increasing number of spots on site by about a hundred and twenty, actually.
Wow.
Um, let's see, where else here? This area here is actually going, proposed to be reclaimed. And it's gonna be grass area, and there's gonna be about a six hundred, five hundred chapel at that location is what they're proposing there. This parking area is going to be expanded and also, I mean, this area is gonna be expanded for parking. And you'll see it when we get to the site plan. Whoop, sorry. Gotta get out of there. More parking over here as well, and then outdoor patios for all the dining is part of the refurbishment of the site.
Rob, is it paved parking?
No, it's not. It's all gravel. They do say two and a half acres of disturbance on the site, though, as part of this. We do not have a SWIP, so one of our comments is definitely gonna be stormwater provision of SWIP, erosion sediment control plans. That is going to be a required mod on that. Other comments we're gonna be, and let me get, let me, uh, move to the site plan so you can see in action. Or instill, I should say. So twenty-four existing spaces, like I said, are being reclaimed as lawn. Hundred twenty spaces are being added overall. They're improving sight lighting. They said they're doing drainage. I haven't seen the drainage work yet. Um, new outdoor patios for the restaurants. Uh, there's a new five hundred and fifty square foot chapel, and there's a new equipment building on site as well. So let's go to it. Okay, so here's your site plan. Again, all those parking areas that you're seeing are gravel. First comment we'd like to make is you have a, quite a number of existing tree coverage in this area, and you're putting a parking lot in front of your site. We'd recommend instead that they try to reclaim this portion of the site. We said it looks a little bit gravel parking. Maybe take this chapel that, I'll, I'll show you what that chapel looks like. Put it in the front of the site. Increase the landscaping and keep the parking in the back. That would be more in accordance with good planning, keeping the parking behind rather than shoving it up front. Increasing the view number of parking that's visible from the road. So that is one comment that we have to make. Lighting, the, is all dark sky, but what we have here are twenty foot, twenty-five foot high poles recommend less than twenty feet. Those locations, again, don't have a SWIP, don't have stormwater, need erosion sediment control, need a SWIP for this project. Let's see what else I got. Lighting levels are actually pretty good. That's the chapel, by the way. More views of the chapel. But it's tucked away in the back. So comments will be, they are making some access modifications to the existing curb cuts. It'll need approval from NYSAD. We want, what we wanna do is maintain as much landscaping that's existing as possible, and if needed, add more to the frontage, and also you may have seen the aerial to the southeast corner, there are residences, so, and they're expanding their parking toward that area. I mean, there's about a hundred feet between the last parking space and those residences, but they should ensure they have enough, um, buffer with landscaping and existing vegetation remains in place. Lane comment I made, stormwater, and then like, as I said earlier, the advisory comment to keep the existing parking in the back and focused their redevelopment on the front and tie in to the, uh, site.
Motion to support staff, Watkins.
Second.
Second, true.
The, the thing is, they're trying to keep, uh, that parking on the front lot for more ax, eat shorter access for the little bear up front. That's probably why they're doing that, so.
I don't know that they're gonna go.
That's a personal opinion.
It appears to me that they are paving quite a bit. The darker area.
Right.
In the site plan, looks like it's going to be paved.
Right. This, I, I, this is, this is paved, I should say that. This new area here is gravel. This is, this is all gravel here, but this up the front looks great, paved, and right now that is all gravel and not really a defined parking lot.
And it will be paved. Um, and so we're, we're talking a significant amount of, of, uh, paving here as well as expansion on the parking.
Well, they're not gonna pave it, right?
No, they're paving the darker area.
The dark areas are paved?
Yeah.
That's why we need a SWIP.
It's not paved now, so.
Yeah.
That's where they come up with the two and a half acres of disturbance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a concern, so, good. Who made the motion?
Watkins.
Thank you, Mark.
Have a second?
I'll second if it hasn't been.
I did, I seconded Drew.
Drew did, yeah.
Yeah, I got you. All right, I, I have him. Thank you, sorry, guys. My bad. And, so what's the required modifications, Rob, so I can?
It's still the same, not changed. Um, let me go down to it. Come on. NYSAD, landscaping, maintain existing vegetation. Light under twenty feet and stormwater, SWIP, erosion sediment control, and then the advisory.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I, I have a quick question. This is Mitchell. I didn't see anything on the, uh, if they're gonna pave, they, they do have a requirement for handicap places, isn't that correct?
Yeah, thanks, Mitch. I think.
Let me, let me zoom in on it and see if I can find.
Yeah, they're right in the back, Mitch. They're right.
Okay, I, I just can't see it, you know, at this level, so.
Yeah, it's tough to see.
There are several in the back and several on the side.
Right back there.
There, and over here. On the, uh, northwest, or that's not northwest, that's. Or that's not northwest, that's.
Looks like they have eight, eight or nine spaces.
Yeah.
So if they, if they keep the parking up front, then you want landscaping in here, Rob?
Long front, yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's. Okay, we got it.
Need further discussion? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Take her.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you very much, people. Much appreciated. Thanks to the new members. Glad you could join us.
Thank you. Good night.